Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Monday, October 28, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Shawn Graham. The following is a list of legislation up for discussion by Pittsburgh City Council. Bill Number 2180, Resolution Authorizing the Conveyance of a Portion of Enright Parklet to Penley Park South, Inc., and Accepting Certain Property in the 8th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh for Public Purposes to Become Part of Enright Parklet. And Bill Number 2181, Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh of the Grant of an Easement in 8th Ward, 9th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh by Penley Park South, Inc., pursuant to the Provisions of Penley Park South's Revised Amended Preliminary Land Development Plan, Approved by the Planning Commission on February 12, 2019, as further amended by Order of the Court of Common Pleas. That concludes the reading of the legislation for today's meeting. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Cablecast Post Cablecast Public Hearing of Monday, October 28, 2019. We are joined with us by Councilwoman Deborah Gross. We're going to ask that the, in this order, the Clerk will read the purpose of the public hearing and then from my office, Shawn Carter will talk a little bit and brief you as to the process that has brought us here this afternoon.
Bill 2180, Resolution Authorizing the Conveyance of a Portion of Enright Parklet to Penley Park South, Inc., and Accepting Certain Property in the 8th Ward of the City for Public Purposes to Become Part of Enright Parklet. Bill Number 2181, Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance by the City of the Grant of an Easement in the 8th Ward, 9th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh by Penley Park South, Inc., pursuant to the Provisions of PPS Revised Amended Preliminary Land Development Plan, approved by the Planning Commission February 12, 2019, as further amended by Order of the Court of Common Pleas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carter.
My name is Shawn Carter, Special Assistant in the Office of Councilwoman Ricky Burgess, and we're here today for a public hearing on two resolutions, the first of which is Bill Number 2019-2180, a Resolution Authorizing the Conveyance of a Portion of Enright Park to Penley Park South Incorporated and Accepting Certain Property in the 8th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh for Public Purposes to Become Portion of, to Become Part of Enright Park. As councilors aware, and I think as most of the public is aware, arrival here has been the product of numerous court cases and negotiations and legislative processes such and another court hearing, which was earlier this month in the chambers of Judge Lawrence O'Toole in the Orphans Court, who authorized the city to swap a portion of its land, that being the portion of the Enright Park, in exchange for a portion of Penley Park South's land to become part of Enright Park, and the judge approved that earlier this month. And this legislation is required by the consent order to complete the land swap, and so that's why it is before you today. And the second piece of legislation is Bill Number 2181, it's a Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh of the Grant of an Easement on a brand-new street that is being constructed by Penley Park South to provide permanent public access to that park and to the residents who live near it and to the development itself. And there is a map, there's a legal description of that easement, and everyone in the room, I believe, has Exhibit A, and Exhibit B is a map, or more a survey, with the pink street is that's New Eva Street, and the green is New South St. Clair Street, and those streets, in addition to providing permanent public access to the development, retains permanent public access to the residential subdivision behind it. Was there anything else you wanted me to discuss, Reverend Burgess?
No, that's fine, I think that's good, thank you very much, Shawn. All right, so we'll go now to the public comment part of this public hearing. So far, I have three speakers who have registered, and if there's other speakers here, I will also afford them three minutes if there are other speakers here. But in order, I have Jennifer Haven, who is opposed, followed by Yvonne F. Brown.
Hi, good morning, my name is Jennifer Haven, 205 South Pacific Avenue, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I'm here on behalf of the Friendship Community Group and the Enright Park Neighbors. I just want to start by clearing the air, because I was here last week during public comment, and I wanted to clear up any misconceptions that there are. The Enright Park Neighborhood Association, Friendship Community Group, Bloomfield Garfield Corporation, we have not sued the city, we have not been a plaintiff in any lawsuits, we were only interveners in the lawsuits between PPS and the city. And I also wanted to mention, if it seems strange that there are not more people here today, myself and John Extell are here speaking on behalf of the entire Enright Park Coalition. There are only certain people that are able to take off during the middle of the day, and because this is a 1:30 hearing, we didn't want it to be a burden on everybody in our coalition. It's just really confusing to me, because it's my understanding that you, Councilwoman Gross, and you, Councilwoman Burgess, that you don't work for the administration, that you don't work for developers, any developer in the city, that you work for us, you work for me, you work for them. But, you know, and I try so hard to not be adversarial, I really do, but we just really feel that the administration has forgotten us, they've forgotten the promises that they had made to us over two years ago, and you should be our protectors, you should be the people that are holding up those promises, you're our liaisons to the city administration, you should be our champions, you should be championing public space, space that had been given to you decades ago and are held under the Public Trust document, for us. That is our park, these are our rivers, these are our hills, everything here belongs to us, and I just, we shouldn't allow our elected officials to monetize our sacrosanct investments in open space and parkland. It's truly the taxpayers that fund the acquisition and the continued investments through our tax dollars, and we're doing this for us, for our future generations, please, please, take this seriously, and don't take us as someone that's here to bother you or to be offensive to you in any way, because that's not my intention. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We have next Yvonne F. Brown, followed by John Extell.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown, and I must deviate, I must make an announcement, and this is for the citizens, because we are being placed in clear and present danger. Coming down Befford, I told Mr. Lavelle about the two signs, they put them up, one is back again. See, what you must understand, there are two signs, the bottom is gray, the sign is on the fence, but someone that can't see, it looks like it's all the ground, my sight is bad, when I got up on it, do you understand, and I tried to call yesterday to tell them they need to change the position that they have these signs, both of them are down today. Me and the children had to walk in the street. When I came back the other day, I had a, I had a big cart, I had to walk all the way up the hill with the cars flying past me, so I'm telling you, Mayor, I tried to leave you a message, she told me no, call 311. Mayor, we are in clear and present danger coming down the hill. See, what bothered me is I seen a public work truck go past, I'm calling him to look, please see, I'm not kidding, this is dangerous, and I know it because I can't see that well. Also, number two, the lady from the Enright Court, I had asked her if the last time they had a petition, had a hearing, the reason why I was interested in Enright Court, as a caseworker, that was my area, and there was a bunch of children, in fact, I had a case that the family had 10 children, that was under me. The other caseworkers talked about how we had so many children out there. So I do agree they need a park, but I want you to understand that I had put in for a hearing before the lady did about Enright Court. They put her, Kraus put her ahead of me, because he did not answer mine, so it was in 30 days, plus, my understanding, the woman got five minutes. When I did my proclamation, I mean, when I did my hearing, I want you to understand, I was given three minutes, he said we have two speakers, I said, well, who is the sponsor? Who is the mysterious sponsor? I have all the papers from Mary Beth telling me, and she also said that I would only get three minutes, I didn't know it then. Oh, and Megan, please pray for me, when you see me upset, because I'm coming down to try to save lives, you understand that they make the rules, you understand they're making the rules, and we are dying, we are dying, or he'll change the rules for Ms. Gross, which I really don't like her that much, and she knows it, because of the statement that she made, that we decided to put the police over in Lawrenceville, we had the meeting, we decided, who are you, that you just one section, and you and the mayor made to decide, when they had the new Chief of Police, he did not come in our neighborhood, because they took it in Lawrenceville, and she's always late, and I'm complaining about that. Very nice, thank you.
You too, Mrs. Brown. John Extell, followed by whoever wants to appear next.
Yes. My name is John Extell, I live at 233 South Pacific Avenue, 15224. Like Ms. Haven, I represent the Friendship Community Group and the Enright Park Coalition. I am commenting on this legislation, and the substance of my comment is to ask that action be held on this legislation until the Enright Park Coalition has an opportunity to meet with the city solicitor, the meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. We hope to, that our concerns, which we have been raising with city officials for a year and a half about the proposed private street, can be addressed. I do want to say that I appreciate seeing the easement language, which was delivered today, the, we believe this is of the essence, that this is necessary and critical element of the legislation, the fact that it was not available until this late date, when there's no opportunity for informed review of it and informed questions, indicates that this has been rushed. When things are rushed, mistakes are made, we would like to ask that there be some reasonable process here, that there be an opportunity for the public to understand what is being proposed for this major development, which is going to last for decades, if not centuries. Unlike the language of the resolution, the first, the members of the Coalition who did participate in the consent order that created Enright Park, that preserved Enright Park, prior to that court order, Enright Park had been proposed for elimination, community groups raised concerns, we are very happy with what was put into the consent order. We had assumed that since the consent order was silent on the question of who would own the new Eva Street, that conventional practice would be followed, the developer would dedicate the completed street to public use. It came as a surprise when the final land development plan called for the street to be private, we raised concerns about, we have no, we believe that there's no reason for it to be private, that all of the developers' concerns regarding maintenance of their stormwater tanks and use of the street for their own events can be accommodated with a public street. We would, however, be happy to have an easement that addresses this. So far, the easement language that was given to us provides no wording whatsoever regarding who will police the street, we trust the current developers, but future developers may use private security guards to arbitrarily harass or exclude people from the park. The park is accessed by both sides of Eva Street, the street pavement itself and the north sidewalk will be private and subject to private security guards unless easement language is provided, that's what we hope to resolve tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, seeing only one, any other speaker other than Carmen, seeing no other speaker, we'll certainly give Carmen three minutes for her.
I'm Carmen Brown, I'm from the East Liberty area, and I'm also Representative of Penn Plaza Support and Action Coalition. I'm here to talk a little bit about what happened after hearing, and I was very, very displeased, I seen that the solicitor, we pay taxes to the solicitor, and the solicitor was representing the gunbirds, they did everything that they possibly, he possibly could, you know, he objected to a lot of things that were said by the community groups, he, you know, he was holding exhibits, I mean, he truly represented the gunbirds, and then I understand when I had talked to him, and we were walking, and I talked to him, and I told him he was totally wrong for what he did, he said, well, I'll be quitting anyway, so he had actually left, and I guess he resigned or whatever, in fact, but also, but like I said, but a lot of, I think, the influence was from the solicitor, the city of Pittsburgh. I think that's why, I believe that's why Judge O'Toole did rule in the favor, because he seen, you know, that the solicitor was favoring the gunbirds, so that played a great part, and I just think it's a shame that they're going to do, they're going to privatize this park, the gunbirds, they don't deserve anything, they took people's homes, now they want a park, now they want to privatize a street, why do we keep giving these people what they want? Because Ricky Burgess gets contributions from them, is that why? Because he definitely gives contributions from them, if you look at his sheet, but again, like I said, is that this is totally wrong, this is, this seems like a lot of corruption in this, and I noticed even when we dispersed, Shawn didn't come over and talk to the community group, he went straight over there and shook the gunbird's hand, which was totally wrong, which showed right there the favoritism and the deals that are being made with our tax dollars. So that's what I wanted to say, I just think that there's so much corruption, I just hope that we can unseat this incumbent, and we're going to be working real hard, and also, I just wanted to say this as well, is that the Welshers are running, and I want to make sure that people know that the Welshers were planted by Ricky Burgess to stack the race. Thank you.
So we are now open to comment by members of council, starting with Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have in front of me the easement language that we talked about last Wednesday, I think I heard from a testifier that the public just received it today, I think this has been in my inbox, I think, since maybe Friday evening or something like that, I'm actually only just seeing it shortly before the hearing, because I was out of town, but Councilwoman Burgess has heard me many times talk about how I hate street vacations. So most members of the public listening to this, if you don't live in my district, you don't know that there's been something like 30 instances where a real estate developer has come into my office and said, if you'll just sell me this piece of street, I can have another townhouse, or two more townhouses, or I could build this thing, and you, you should want me to build. My district has a surfeit, a surplus, I'm not sure if I'm using that word right, of developers, we have developers swinging from the neighborhood's hair on almost every neighborhood, and the neighbors are generally not grateful for a new development next door to them, and are not in favor of vacating city street for sure. And it's really been dozens of times in District 7, which is very close to this boundary. This really reminds me of an Oxford development situation, the River's Edge in the Strip District, which is three crossings, hugely successful, hundreds of apartments, big corporate headquarters now, but the developer really wanted a portion of 26th Street, and I kept saying, that's people's riverfront property, you can't have it, because it's just where 26th terminates to the river, it would have been hugely convenient for them to control it, it's still a bone of contention, because they want to, they say we're not, we, as the city, even though it's a city street, aren't regulating parking closely enough, you know, there's like no shoveling that they say they're doing, they're doing maintenance stuff, and I've mentioned this quite a few times around things that are park-related, so this is both park and city street related, that we keep encountering these situations where it's either public property, but people want to do private functions on it, or it's private property, and we want to do public functions on it. We're going to have to have this conversation to some resolution, if we're going to build five miles of riverfront park and trail through, along the Allegheny River on private property, right, we've required these 100-foot setbacks with public easements, but on private property. But I'm generally not in favor of giving up private, or public property, because again, especially with this street, kid, okay, where did I just lose the maps, here it is, this is, these super blocks also really bother me, especially around Friendship and East Liberty, the urban renewal legacy of having these giant, giant footprints without pedestrian and bicycle access is problematic, because it just means you're building something that you can only get to by car, which again, generally, the private developer finds that appealing, if they want the kind of tenant or owner inside that has a car, and they're building for people who have cars, but it is not really good city planning, we've decided that. And so I would prefer to see these, but now it's been to Orphans Court, I would prefer, and I probably, you know, I think I did vote, I might have abstained when we sent it there, actually, that these remain public streets, but with the easement on it for whatever operating and maintaining that the private developer needs, and I've been pushing for that in my district as well. I am very happy to see the kind of connection, I'm going to reorient this, right, because this is the way I think of it, because this arrow is north. My district starts just a little bit down here, on the south side of Friendship Avenue, where it ends on South Euclid, and it picks up again, not that many blocks, maybe 10 blocks north of here, so I have both the southern side and the northern side, and I'm very concerned that people should be able to travel, that we dismantle the big car through affairs and the big super blocks that have blocked pedestrian and non-car travel north-south, because really, if you go through Enright Park right now, and you continue through what is South St. Clair, you cross over into North St. Clair, and you end right up at the Super Playground in Highland Park. I mean, this is a way for a densifying neighborhood that is filling up with children to really kind of have that non-car access, I really can't emphasize enough how these, have like 1960-style, it was really tons of street vacations to create these super blocks and create the big, kind of inner ring, almost little mini highway around East Liberty, that we now see that as the wrong kind of planning, and we should not participate in it. So I appreciate that we're just getting this now, I'm glad we're getting it before tomorrow, but, or Wednesday, I guess, it's on Standing Committee?
No, tomorrow.
So we took, we took a provisional vote, and we're just getting this, and then we're looking for final vote, is there some kind of?
Yes, there is some time, yes, there is, yes, there absolutely is. Yes, for the development to get done, there are time pressures in order to get this done, that would be absolutely correct, it has been held up unfortunately and unnecessarily, and so the court has already ruled, so this is really not a matter of us, it's not a matter of us amending, it's us simply following through what the court has already decided, and any further delay is actually unfair to the developer, because they have actually had their day in court, won their day in court, and so I think any, any other delay is actually nefarious and unnecessary. That's just my, that's my opinion, so I'm sorry, I'm answering your question, if you have something else to say.
That's right, no, I think I've, I've said my piece, in general, I don't like to see us adding these, again, this is an opportunity to undo basically a super block, not to create one, but to undo it, and I'm not sure that we're pushing hard enough, but it's not a court, like you say.
I'm really grateful for your leadership in your district, and certainly, inclusionary zoning is a great example of what can happen in our city, I think that you have been, in many ways, a champion for your district in terms of your vision of its planning, and I support wholeheartedly your efforts in that, in that area. I also, too, have a vision of my district, this park, this development is wholly, completely in my district, on all sides, and I made a promise to the residents of Penn Plaza, that I would give them a chance to come back, and as to date, well, not quite to date, but over the next few weeks, I will have completed that promise, in that we will have had enough replacement units in the general East Liberty area, walking distance from where this development occurs, that the bulk of those residents will be able to come back, there are two projects called Mellon Orchards, one by Trec, one by another developer, there's one on Nagley Avenue, where the old Urban Academy was housed, that has a 9%, it's been awarded 9%, that will be all affordable, and there is a project that eventually be awarded on Beatty Street, and when you take all four of those developments together, the totals of those exceed the number of residents that were in Penn Plaza, and so the mayor and I, over the next few months, will have fulfilled that promise. Now, in terms of this particular piece of legislation, it is, in my council district, I support it, not only do I support it, I find, and have found some of the community's dissent to be disingenuous, not necessarily to improve access to the park, that's really not, it's been used as a smokescreen to, in order to stop slowdown, because they don't want the development to occur, and I find that to be certainly the right, but now, there has been a court proceeding, there has been a judgment, and there has been a final determination, and so now, I think, I have now found that effort to be not in the public's best interest, but really to be somewhat mean-spirited, and, and, and not being clear about motives, and so I will sincerely ask the council to vote for this tomorrow, so that we can get this behind us, so that the new development can occur, and let's focus on the other parts of East Liberty where we can build more affordable housing, we're building some now, and then to use the strength of East Liberty to rebuild the rest of the East End, Homewood, Lincoln, Leamington, Lomer, East Hills, and that's really the plan, is to use the strength of East Liberty, and it has worked, right, we're building 58 units in Homewood right now, we've built 400 units, and I don't talk about this at length, but had there not been the redevelopment of East Liberty, there would never be a Lomer choice, we've never gotten choice, in fact, the federal government has told us, the reason that it's approved choice in the rebuilding of Lomer from the $200 million investment is because of the amenities of East Liberty that those residents can now walk to, and so we want to use East Liberty and its dynamism as an economic hub. Lastly, but not least, part of the overall process of this development will put money into Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that Affordable Housing Trust Fund will be used to build more affordable housing in East Liberty, and so we need this project to continue on a variety of reasons.
Would you indulge me about how that contribution is going to happen? Because there was a member media years ago that said it was going to be from Alerta, but it's not going to be from Alerta.
Shawn? Shawn's my technical guy, so he can help.
Shawn Carter again, Councilwoman, it's being funded through, a loan guaranteed through the Transit Revitalization Investment District that currently encompasses the half-mile of East Liberty that starts at the East Liberty Busway Station.
The transit-related.
Transit Revitalization Investment District.
It is, it is, but it basically, it operates like a TIF.
Absolutely.
But it's transit-related.
It's a TIF, yeah.
So the increment of future property taxes is paid by the property owner, but diverted to the URA, in this case, probably?
Yes.
And they borrow against those future revenues for an upfront bond?
Actually, it's not exactly the URA, it's the East Liberty Transit Revitalization Investment District Redevelopment Authority.
Ah.
It's a separate authority created to manage this.
City Council must have created that.
City Council created it.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So, we'll be borrowing against those increment revenues, the projected property taxes?
Yes.
And that bond will fund the affordable housing?
That was also correct.
Yes, and the park?
Got it, got it.
Okay, any other concerns? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn, any other speaker, I'm sorry, make sure there's no other speakers, seeing no other speakers, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor, just the two of us, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposing, say we are adjourned!